Hafaree and good afternoon to you and to the people of Guam. Today is March 14, 2023. The public hearing will be conducted by myself, Senator William A. Parkinson, Chairman of the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit and Unemployment Insurance and Universal Health Care. This public hearing is called to order and now is 2 o'clock. For the record and to comply with the open government law, notice of this hearing was disseminated via email to all senators and local media outlets on Tuesday, March 7, 2023. And second notice was also shared to all senators and local media on Friday, March 10, 2023. Notice of this hearing was also posted and available on the Guam Legislature's website and the government of Guam Public Notice Portal. Individuals testifying shall be recognized by the chair. Before speaking, state your name for record-keeping purposes. We have only one item on our agenda this afternoon. That is Bill Number 9-37COR. Bill Number 9-37COR was introduced and referred to the Committee on Health, Land Justice and Culture on January 18, 2023, and is re-referred to my committee on January 31, 2023. This afternoon, the committee will hear testimony on Bill Number 9-37COR, an act to amend Section 58, 109 and subsection 58, 110 of Chapter 58 and adding a new Chapter 58B to Title 10, Division 3 Guam Code annotated relative to the legalization and regulation of the use of consumer-grade fireworks. Introduced by Dwayne Siniklis, Joe Sinagastin, Roy Canata, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, William Parkinson, Therese Terlahe, Jesse Luhon, and Senator Tom Fisher. I would like to welcome my colleagues who are joining us today. We have here the main sponsors, Senator Siniklis, my colleague Senator Canata, Senator Fisher, and Senator Sinagastin. Thank you for coming in today. We will now proceed with discussions on Bill Number 9-37COR, with which I will allow the prime sponsor to give his opening remarks. Senator Dwayne Siniklis, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, this is a lifelong dream of mine. Ever since I was 12 years old, they made fireworks illegal. And up until then, my dad would take me down to Acme, just like many other dads of that generation would take them down and get fireworks, you know, get bottle rockets, smoke bombs, trick gum. Acme was one of the best places on the island to have fun, you know? And they made it illegal back when I was about 12 years old. And I promised myself that if I ever had the chance to make it legal again, I would do it. And thank goodness for Facebook memories because just this morning, I posted seven years ago that I wish that they would allow consumer-grade fireworks to be legal again so we could enjoy them in Fourth of July and liberation and Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. And there's just something about fireworks that just does something to the young mind, you know? It's, it's, you pop the fireworks at night and things go flashing in your brain and you get inspired somehow and then you love to create and make things happen. Well, I've been chasing down this dream for the longest time and only now I actually have the means and the capability to actually run for office. Takes a lot of money to run for office. And just a couple of years ago, I was able to realize that. And now I had the means to run for office and make this a reality. I was a school counselor once and I would always tell my students, chase down your dreams like it was the last bus of the night. Most of us who stayed in the, you know, lived in the States, you know, you know how, what it, how it feels like to miss that last bus of the night? You're gonna have to walk home. Well, this is me living up to what I preached to my students. So here I am, just chasing our childhood dream as if it was the last bus of the night. And I wish, I wish to, that this measure goes through so that we can have the young and the old enjoy fireworks again once more. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Siniklis. I'd like to open the floor now to hear testimony from those who joined us today. I will call individuals based on how their names appear in the order of the sign-in sheet. For the first person, we will have Mark Mendiola. Please come up.
Buenos, hafaree, en la plena ciudad. Madre de Dios, gracias. Para de suerte, es una propone el Bill Number 9-37. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, senators, honorable senators, Mr. Chairman, Parkinson, Senator Siniklis, Senator Canata, Senator Fisher, and Senator Sinagastin. I come before you today, actually, it's part of a lesson also. I have my son with me. I took him out of school because I wanted to learn about civics, about speaking up on things that you think is important. And although this bill out there, you know, for some people may be trivial, but I look at it at a different perspective and I want my son to see. And we had a discussion about this, you know, about safety, about the opportunity. And when I first heard about this bill, so I'm born and raised, I'm from Guam, but I had a good fortune and opportunity to live on the island of Saipan and Tinian as a teacher, so I was an educator out there. And so during their festive celebrations, they would have these fireworks. And, you know, with my kids, it was enjoyable moment, right? To ring in the New Year with fireworks, celebrations. I think the hotels, they all have their fireworks that they have up there. And I always wondered why Guam, but I do remember this. My father was a fire, worked for the Guam Fire Department at the time, the fire prevention. By the way, I want to recognize Chief Siniklis behind me, good friend of mine. But, you know, I just wanted to say that when this bill came out, I took a special interest in it and I wanted to see where this was gonna go. And so I looked at it and I think it makes a lot of sense in the sense that it looks out for the safety issue. It really incorporates responsible, you know, use of consumer-grade fireworks. I know that during New Years and stuff like that, I don't know if I can say this now, but we all made those canyons, right? You know, the cans, you know, we had the feathers with the water spout, you know? We figure out ways to try and kind of do this. Just the other day, I was down at the beach and I heard gunshots, gunfire, you know? And you see and hear all these things and obviously it's kind of concern for us, you know? I had to tell my kids, stand close to the car while we were hearing these guns go off. But I'm here in support of it because I think it provides also an opportunity. I also had an opportunity to read the fiscal note that was requested by the Committee on Rules, but it also came back from BBMR. And I was looking at it and there's a flame account there. And that flame account, I think it generates about $1.1 million. This is kind of gonna be, I look at this bill as a way to generate revenue for the fire department. And if you look at that flame account, it's supposed to help out with equipment. I remember the old days of, hey, we don't have enough ambulances, we don't have enough life support, you know, devices and things of that nature. And so I looked at it, I think if there's any, one thing that we can take from this is that I think, you know, we can regulate it, but I think we need to tax it so that it can really help out our agency. I look at this as a revenue generating bill and an opportunity to generate revenue for the fire department. And just specifically earmark it so that it has a steady stream. I know down in the legislature, when you appropriate money, it has to have a funding source to it. And God knows that the fire department needs all the help they can get. And if this is a way to generate that revenue for them and to just work it through, I think in the fiscal note, it also said it didn't know where the money was, which account it was gonna go to, things of that nature. So obviously, those mechanics need to be worked out. But the general sentiment I have is, and the folks that I spoke to, you know, family around the table, that yes, they do want something like this. And I think, you know, the safety issue is also gonna be a big one. And I think if we regulate it in a way, and I think it also in the law, it gives the chief, the fire chief, the opportunity to determine the types of, you know, fireworks. So in my research, I found out that this is a multimillion-dollar industry and the United States is the largest consumer of fireworks. And so, you know, in terms of looking at the resources that we have, if we were to allow this on the island of Guam, I think it can benefit us, but at the same time too, just to be very cautious about the safety issue of it. And I think the experts behind me probably need to chime in a little bit more about, you know, the safety of these things. But right now, we have unregulated stuff going on on the island. And I think if it's regulated, you know, then I think it'll be best for our community. So, un dunkle na seduzi masi, hafaree, Senator Telo. Thank you for allowing me to render my testimony. I stopped writing stuff, I just like to speak now, so thank you. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Next, we would like to call up Benjamin Mendiola. Please come up.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry. And the next would be Joey Siniklis. Go ahead, sir.
Hafaree, buenas, Senator Parkinson, Senator Siniklis, awesome last name, Senator Canata, Senator Fisher Prima, Senator Tarigui, and Senator Sinagastin. As you know, I'm Joey Siniklis, the acting fire chief for the Guam Fire Department. So I'll just preface my testimony before I read it into record that the Guam Fire Department basically takes a neutral stance on this bill and I'll explain it further in my testimony. So again, once again, thank you for this opportunity to present this testimony on the issue of fireworks. Again, this testimony is neither in support or in opposition of Bill 937 relative to the legalization and regulation of the use of consumer-grade fireworks. We do acknowledge that fireworks are a staple in holiday festivals, festivities and celebrations in Guam and nationwide. And because of their vibrant colors and stunning displays, many enjoy the entertainment and the joy they bring to mark special occasions. But with the pros also... It's been a while, Elaine, I apologize. The joy they bring to mark special occasions, but with the pros also comes the cons. According to a report by the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission, CPSC, there were nine fatalities and an estimated 11,500 injured in incidents involving fireworks in 2021. And according to the NFPA, fireworks started an estimate of 19,500 fires in 2018, including 1,900 structure fires, 500 vehicle fires, and 17,100 outside and other fires. Like Guam, Massachusetts is the only state that bans the sale of all consumer-grade fireworks, only allowing for professional displays. With 16 other states, the sale of non-aerial and non-explosive safe and sane is allowed. However, most have varied licensing, age, and operating requirements. Submitted with the testimony in your hands is a position statement from the International Association of Fire Chiefs that is adamantly against the importation, sale, and use of all consumer-grade fireworks. However, should Bill 937 pass, the Guam Fire Department believes extensive work must be conducted to facilitate the sale and the use of these fireworks on island as Mark has mentioned. GFD will require additional funding to conduct focused inspections on vendor storage locations, the frequent inspection of imported fireworks, and the enforcement of fines associated with the illegal importation and/or usage. Vendors must also be amenable to the possibility of retrofitting storage areas to include sprinkler systems along with the implementation of other requirements, such as fees for the applications of these measures. And I must state at this point that those costs are quite significant to upgrade existing facilities. However, GFD will enforce the laws passed by this legislature and signed by the governor of Guam. But we must be afforded an opportunity to research and maybe implement new fees and fines as part of our overall fees and fines update with a comprehensive program to regulate the sale and the use of consumer-grade fireworks. As Mark stated in such a great verbal testimony, the GFD is focused on life safety and the protection of property. Therefore, we must also plan for the inevitable injuries and possible fires, both wildland and structural, caused by the negligent use or the improper discharge of fireworks. Thank you again for allowing me to have this testimony before you, subject to any of your questions.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for the acting fire chief? Do you have any questions for the fire chief? Oh, yeah, do you have any question? Does any of my colleagues have any questions for the fire chief? Sure.
Chief, a simple question. I noticed on your testimony, the fire department will require additional funding to conduct. I think that, that can be, that can be understood if the law is passed. But the first part is that extensive work must be conducted to sell and use, all of that is all leading to when the bill is passed first. I'm concerned is as the fire department come up with something that, that would be needed to amend the bill so that it could pass, then you can ask for money to do your inspection, then you can, then, you know, everything is progressive. If anybody wants to get a business license, then that's the process we'd have to identify then. And then we can include that in the bill. Identify what the cost of the license, what the requirements are, that if you want to get a license, you gotta have a facility to store it. See, all of that has the, it's pretty much leaning on you folks. You tell us what the requirement should be and in order for somebody to go in there and says, I'd like to apply for a business license to sell fireworks, they gotta meet these criteria before they're granted. In other words, they gotta go through you folks and say, you know, when they go to the building one stop, they say, this is my building, all the fire department is to check you, to make sure you got the proper sprinkler, all the safety device must be in place before they can get the license. So it's pretty much, we need the input from the fire department because until such time, otherwise, this bill can basically pass as it is. You know, it's a very simple bill, asking consumer grade to be allowed, provided that you provide the recommendation, that the legislature would adopt it, and that revenue and tax has to comply with it consistently with the fire department. No different than when you're doing the Airbnb inspection of rooms. When you guys go in there, it don't meet the occupancy, it doesn't meet the fire. All that stuff falls in place, but I think your statement is good, but it's short-lived, chief. I know where I'm coming from, chief.
Understood. I absolutely agree with you and I've actually, before this body many years ago, many legislatures ago, I've supported, I've provided that information before. This is not the first time this was brought up, but it is the first time that it's gotten to the level of a public hearing. So congratulations to you on that, Senator Siniklis. We have that information on hand to include our entire fees and fines update that has been presented to the legislature over the years. I do, while I don't apologize for my service, I am returning from one-year deployment, military deployment. This is only my second week back on the job. But I will provide that information to your office, Senator Siniklis, to make sure that you have everything you need to, if you move forward with making this pass, to make it successful and right for Guam.
Okay, with that, Mr. Chair, once that information is provided and supplied to all our colleagues, then we can actually, you know, give recommendation to you because your committee's gonna have to do the final committee report. Then we can move forward on it because I like to see it pass. When Senator Siniklis brought up when he was young, I was a lot older when he was 12. And I don't remember when I was in the police department going down to Acme and getting fireworks because I was in the police department where we are enforcing, where you can't do it. And with the fire department currently, when it identifies that there is fireworks going on today, if it's really that unsafe, then nobody should be firing fireworks at all. I don't care if you're a professional or not, it doesn't matter. There is license given out, there is fireworks happening every year. I think it's twice or sometimes four or five times a year. There shouldn't be a special group of people that get licensed. Because, and the reason why I lean, I lean towards that is that if the fire department comes out with a checklist that says you gotta be trained and certified to handle fireworks, you're good to go. I mean, maybe you can answer the question, who authorized and who licensed them or certifies the people that are so-called professionals that are doing it today? I don't know. Do you know that?
Yeah, so we already have those type of regulations in place for, for commercial firework, firework production. So I think the biggest issue here really, because we can regulate consumer fireworks, that's not a problem. It's the end user that is our concern, right? But we don't know what the actual consumer, who they are, what they are, what their intent is with these, with these fireworks. It could be for a show or it could be for sinister reasons, we don't know. Anything could happen once you put it into the general public's hands. And not, not to, not to come off with distrust for our community, but it's just a concern that, that we have. And we just want to be ready for it, should, should something like that happen. We are strapped as it is, projecting a shortfall for this fiscal year. You add another high potential, high incident capability to our people, then that's only gonna strain on our resources. So I like reading the fiscal note and you guys are considering the flame fund. And yes, the allure of that funding is, is attractive, especially to me as, as running the fire department and trying to get more equipment. But we just want to make sure there's a good balance between the safety of our people and, and the mission that we have to, to serve and save. So that's why we take a neutral stance on it. We will enforce the law, we're just asking your support to help us keep our people safe. And I know in the end, aside from all the beautiful fireworks and the shows that we're gonna get and the celebrations, the safety of our people is your guys' concern as much as it's ours. So that's all we want to make sure.
Thank you, chief, and welcome back. Thank you for serving.
Thank you. Senator Telo, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And good afternoon to everyone who's here to testify. I'm just, you know, taken back on, on the fire department's position as not to have one. Joey, I know you've worked in certain arenas that had a huge research team and data and information. I was expecting your testimony to be at least, you know, 10 pages long with all that data and information. And then to come in front of us to tell us that, okay, whatever you guys decide that's gonna be the possibilities. It doesn't get, I mean, that's what the law gonna be, it's fine. But I think there's a lot more involved in that, that you need to provide this body, the ramifications of fireworks and what it does. I mean, right now, you only put down, there are nine, well, it says here, U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission, there were nine fatalities and an estimated of 11,500 injured in incidents involving fireworks. I'm pretty sure when people hear injured, they think it's just like a burn. Sometimes it takes off a child's finger, you know, or even takes out an eye. This is a lot more dangerous than most people think. You're dealing with high explosives in some cases because a lot of times, these fireworks can be put together and make one big fireball. And, and it kind of, you know, it worries me. You talk about money, you know, Mr. Mendiola coming up here, oh, this is gonna generate a lot more, you know, money for the fire department. Well, can you imagine the devastation on how much we will lose if there's a huge fire in the south, you know, with all the runoff? And how much damage it's gonna cause our reefs from this runoff, from the burning of fields? These things that need to be brought out so that we can really decide whether this is a good idea or not. Joey, how about on Guam? Has there been any major issues with, with fireworks in the past that caused us to actually, you know, make it illegal on Guam? Oh, turn on your mic, please, yeah.
I don't know the history of, of consumer fireworks. Like I said, in all truth, I found out about this hearing yesterday, all right? So I didn't have enough time to do all the research that you asked for. As you know, in my history, I would provide you all of that. What I did provide to you was the attachment, which is, which is a position statement that has all the information that you're asking for across the nation. And to be honest, nine fatalities is, is nine too much, right? And so I'm not sure how much you want me to sensationalize the stats, but the stats are clear that there's been fatalities, there's been injuries, right? So, and just like with any other activity, right? But that, that's kind of why, you know, you ask, why am I taking a neutral stance? Is because, you know, there's a body, a legislature designed to create law and there's an executive branch designed to execute the law, which I'm a part of. The governor signs it, then I will enforce the law that's before me, right? That's just my, my thought about it, right? So I've provided you the information in front of you, the stats. It's all there as a body. When you put all this informed education behind your decision, then the fire department will have no choice to act otherwise.
Well, we're here because you are the expert in the field.
Absolutely.
And you would know better. So to provide us a page, you know, one page, and that's it on, you know, what really can be damaging to our island by having these. You know, money is one thing, but you know, really? Is that gonna bring back a life? Is that gonna take, you know, the southern ends of fields all burnt down and their crops burned and stuff? So it's, sometimes money is not as important, things that can't be replaced.
Right.
And it's kind of worrisome. I mean, you look at all the other states that have agreed to something less explosive, like for instance, the sparklers, right? Can you give me some information just on how damaging a sparkler can be from your... Because I know you've been to school for this. I know you've worked with other agencies in, in the other jurisdictions about fireworks and the harm it caused. Can you just, something as simple as sparklers? We all think, oh, that's, that's...
Yeah, so sparklers can emit up to 5,000, up to 10,000 candle power of, of heat, right? So it can burn you. It's basically a welding torch in a child's hand, right? So if it's used irresponsibly, yes, it could do a lot of damage. But some of these, you know, I'm trying my best, like I said, to, to allow you to make those decisions based on the information that's in front of you, right? And yes, we can oppose it and we can, we can support it, but either way comes with all these stats of what can happen, right? Will it happen? We don't know, but what can happen, right? So we just need to make sure that...
What has happened.
It has happened, right? In the future, or it has happened and what can happen going forward, right?
And it could happen in the future, right?
So, but if we are gonna do it, what we're saying is we need to regulate it. We need to make sure that we do it right.
Does that mean...
And I only mentioned, you know, you asked me, you talked about the funding. Not once did I say, we want all the funding. We thank you, but we know that, that it's about the safety first that we're concerned about. And, you know, funding is the answer to help us, our side of it, to, to help enforce it so we can prevent as much as possible.
So is the fire department ready to go to every child who grabs a sparkler or buys a sparkler from a vendor and starts to light one up, be there to train them on how to use it correctly? I doubt it.
Again, Senator, that's, that's what I brought up in my state, my statements, right? We don't know what the consumer is gonna do and that's the concern that we have. And can the fire department go out and do public education? Yes, we can, but not every single child, that's impossible.
Well, I think there should be requirements, actually.
I agree.
You know, it's just not like education, but certain requirements on who gets to handle this, who gets to buy it, et cetera, down the line.
Absolutely.
Now, when it comes to Chapter 58-B, I mean, 58B, use of consumer-grade fireworks, that whole section that goes down to definitions, legislative fighting, et cetera, down the line. Is there anything in here that gives you rules and regulations on, on how to proceed or, or the other additional costs? Or, you know, something like in the GAR that you would follow when it comes to processing of any type of...
So we do have our fees and fines schedule that is adopted or within the GAR. And it does cover explosives, which fireworks can, or incendiary products that can, which fireworks fall under, right? So based on the, the type of fireworks that are brought in, there are certain regulations that allow for the storage and the use and how to use it currently. So now that we're talking consumer fireworks, this is why I brought up in my testimony, we need to give it, be given an opportunity to relook at our fees and fines and the regulations and before we enact this into law to allow us to do that.
Right, and then that's exactly what you said toward the end is that on your last paragraph, GFD will enforce the laws passed by this legislature and signed by the governor of Guam. However, we must be afforded an opportunity to research, implement fees, fines, and comprehensive programs to regulate the sale and use of consumer-grade fireworks.
Exactly.
You know, this, we need to be cautious moving into something that can actually kill a person, damage a home, you know, take a child's eye out, you know, all kinds of terrible things that can happen.
I agree.
And I think it's something that we shouldn't be so rushed on, especially when it comes to funding it, you know, how we're gonna fund these, like Senator Sinagastin mentioned. It's gonna cost some money to implement this and you're definitely not gonna go in and with nothing to enforce or I'm tired of us passing laws with no enforcement and no funding. It's gotta have both because what is a law if you can't enforce it? So I thank you, Joey. I'm just, I hope that you can provide this body more than one sheet of paper on really the effects of what would happen if a child or anyone who, who... of paper on really the effects of what would happen if a child or anyone who deals with fireworks and the implications that can happen with them, you know, especially in safety. Have you, GFT or GPD and other authorities ever come across their investigation on how illegal fireworks are found, how they found their way to Guam? Have you ever done any investigation?
Yeah, I'll refer that question to the Guam Police Department. We do participate when requested, but it's more so after an accident has occurred or something of that nature. Usually, if there's a violator, for lack of a better term, that's immediately turned over to the Guam Police Department.
Do you happen to know what the penalties that are imposed on individuals or businesses who...
I do not know at this time, Senator.
Who found with violation? Are there any?
So yes, in our, so when we do fire inspections, yes, there are, and we automatically report it to ATF, and it becomes a federal violation.
It becomes federal?
Yes.
So it's out of your hands at this point?
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay. Okay, so thank you so much. I'm looking forward to more testimony coming from you, because we rely on the experts such as yourself to make a sound decision on a bill.
Totally agree, Senator, and to be honest, we were joking about this in my office, I actually have two presentations for and against with all the information. We're talking like 30 pages, but I thought in the interest of brevity, I'll just do a one pager for you for today.
Oh, no.
But I will submit those things to you.
Please do.
That's not an issue.
And for the listening audience, can you tell me how many pages were on the for and how many were on the against?
I'm sorry, is your question again?
Can you tell me, for the listening audience, how many pages on the for and how many pages on the against?
It's roughly about the same, about the same.
Looking forward to it.
They pretty much identify both sides of it, and they just kind of focus on one versus the other, right? So usually, when you put out a good argument, you try to ensure that you entertain the opposition of it, right? So, but yeah, I'll provide that, not a problem.
Thank you, Chief, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taitzegui. Senator Fisher, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Chief, and good afternoon, Mr. Mendiola. I guess I'd like to begin by saying, congratulating Senator San Nicolas on this. All through the campaign, he promised that he was going to bring this forward, and we all knew what was his mission, and it was to bring an act like this forward, and he did it. So thank you very much for fulfilling that promise.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And then, Chief, welcome home, thank you for your service. If you, if you, if you all have to develop rules and regs, do you think you could get them done by Liberation Day?
We would definitely give it our best, Senator.
Okay, so is it realistic to suppose we might be able to buy sane and safe fireworks by Liberation Day?
I think it's realistic. You know, we, now that this is the focus, yes, we absolutely, I can put a project officer on it, and like I said, we've done this work, a lot of this work already, a lot of the heavy lifting over the years, and we presented it before and would just, you know, blow the dust off and get it to you as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you very much. No further questions.
I'd like to recognize Senator Roy Canatz, if you have any questions.
Senator Fisher stole my thunder. That was my goal, is to get this legislation passed before July so that we can, you know, not only infuse the economy with more money, but have more celebrations and activities for our nennies to our nonnas. So, you know, that's pretty much my goal, is to help my colleague Senator San Nicolas achieve his goal and boost our economy cells, too. So, you know, there are risks. I myself, I'm an RSO Range Safety Officer for firearms. At the end of the day, it's not our goal to have individuals go out there and wreak havoc against society, but that's beyond our control. But again, our goal is to try to educate as much as possible, and even if you put requirements out there, again, it doesn't stop people from taking other weapons and doing other things with it, too. So, you know, I stress the importance of safety and activity. Education is paramount as well, but at the end of the day, we liberate our people, let's have some more fireworks, and let the fireworks be what it is. We're going to have pros and cons on everything in our life, as long as there's enforcement there, there's a clause, there's funding source, there's a mechanism. If Saipan can do it, I think we can do it. Otherwise, Saipan's making more money than us, and we're not trying to say that Saipan doesn't need the money, but, you know, if we can make money here, help us get more cycles out for the fire department, then maybe we can see that endeavor of educating every child. Again, we try to educate each child, but again, it's to their comprehension and as far as they want to deal with it as a consumer, right? I myself buy nice things and new things, like an iPad, but we don't all look at the manual instruction inside the box, just like we buy cars. We don't always look at the manual, we don't always pass every test in the driver's license test, but it is there, but we cannot guarantee that. There's no faults or no liabilities with everything we do. So that's my point. And congratulations to my colleague. His number-one promise out there was fireworks, and it's coming up to its finish line, I'm
Before I recognize the author of the bill to ask some questions, I know Senator Taitzegui has another question, so please, I yield this for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, you know, just for the listening audience here, I have a testimony here from Fred Bredalio, former chief of police, and he's sending in his testimony, and I just want to make sure, Joey, you get a copy of his testimony. It has some of the information here, and in his testimony, he says he's opposed to the passage of the legislation with great concern about the impact of security, safety among our island community if passed into law and written. So I think it's worth looking at, and of course, these are in their committee reports, so the public can also read his testimony, but I'd like you to have it. And my last question is just, so why is fireworks legal in Hoggett?
I'm assuming that's a rhetorical question, Senator.
Well, as a fire chief...
Because it's not.
As an acting fire chief, you know, we got liberation coming up, we've got certain other, you know, Fourth of July, and for some reason, you know, nobody seems to enforce the law in Hoggett. So I hope, Joey, that you can get your team together and make sure that it's fair across the island.
Man, I apologize, Senator, you know, I called you pretty much, so we shouldn't be fighting like this, but...
It's okay.
I don't think that we're not enforcing the law. Guam Police Department is doing an excellent job, I support my brothers in blue. It's just, it's very hard to find, you know, the responsible party sometimes, you know, they light it, they light it in a inconspicuous location, and then they run.
They run.
So, I mean, that, I don't know if that's happening in Aggett, but I assume that's why they're not caught by now. So, you know, these things can be set, I mean, we've, I've been to, I go to Spanaway, Washington, all the time, and they get cakes of fireworks from the Indian reservations, and you can just light it and walk away, and they're very safe, and they get lit, just like what we see down at Aggett on occasion. And it is a concern for us, and I could tell you, Guam Police Department is doing their job, they're looking, and it's unfortunate, we don't know, maybe somebody is caught and they're trying to catch the bigger fish, I don't know, but I would refer that to them.
When those go out, you see how close they are to some of the homes, and some of the homes in Hoggett is still, you know, with tin roof and wooden structure. You know, all it takes is one of those to go the opposite direction and start that house on fire.
Absolutely, and that's the concern that the Guam Fire Department brings.
Thank you, thank you.
Of course, and now I'll recognize the main author to ask some questions of the fire chief. Go ahead, Senator San Nicolas.
Actually, I'm from Hoggett, and there might be some connection or whatever, but nobody down there is complaining. But I wanted to thank you, sir, for your service and welcome home. I have, we also have Mr. Franco here, you know, two weeks ago, we actually went to Saipan. I sat with the Lieutenant Governor and Speaker of the House. We actually bought some fireworks, and I had the Speaker of the House, and I recorded him on a video, and he was the first one to light up fireworks for us, and we quite enjoyed it. We watched as the kids played with us, along with us, you know, the kids were at the beach, and all of them came up and enjoyed the fireworks with us. We made sure that they were safe, and we popped them out, but Mr. Franco and the leadership in Saipan told me that fireworks there, you know, was kind of like a, the law was kind of like a progressive thing where they kept amending it, making it safer and safer. In fact, when they first came up with, you know, fireworks, everybody was selling it on the street corner, you know, whenever it came to celebration or whatever, it was that plentiful. Over the years, Saipan has tried to make it more safer, you know, the transportation, the procurement, the sale, and they had certain requirements, and actually was able to go and visit one of the establishments that actually held and contained the fireworks and which made it safe. They also said that once the container arrived at the port, the fire chief or the fire department would actually escort the goods to the location. So I am very open to anything that you have to make sure that, you know, our celebrations and our enjoyment of fireworks, safe. I too, you know, it would kill me if anybody would harm themselves or a child would get hurt, it would kill me, you know, to see that happen. So I am with you, and I, you know, while I'm still here, I will go ahead and support any measure or any concern that you may have so that we can have this means of celebration, and that way, we can also, from your end, ensure the safety of the public. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for your service and thank you for speaking up today. I myself, I would just like to say, I personally appreciate the brevity of your testimony. It's straightforward and to the point, and I think I appreciate the neutrality of the fire department, because as my colleague Senator Canatz mentioned, that for any legislation we do, there is always going to be trade-offs and consequences. You know, maybe we'd be trading out some injuries for other injuries, because I like to look at the utility of consumer-grade fireworks for public safety as an alternative to firearms, because we know that's a very common thing on island, that people like to shoot firearms in the sky come New Year's and, you know, celebration time. And I personally like the consumer-grade fireworks as a safety alternative, that so we're not having bullets fly all land on us and we have sparklers instead. My question for the fire department is, I know that there is consumer-grade fireworks being used in Hawaii, would that be able, would that be something that would help you potentially help streamline your regulations and your fee scheduling? Is that something that could be helpful to you folks? Oh, yeah, absolutely. As part of any good research, we always look for similar municipalities and populations and population centers and figure out how they're doing it, what makes them successful. So if it is the desire of the body to move forward with this, then yeah, we would definitely get similar, we like to compare to Maui, for instance, what they're doing, and I get what their regulations are and see if it fits for Guam. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I really appreciate your testimony, and you're dismissed, sir, thank you. I'd like to call back Mark Mendiola for a round of questioning by this body, if you'd be so kind, sir, and then we'll call up the last of the testimonies.
Thank you.
Senator Sinagastin, would you like to go first, if you have any questions?
No, I just have a general comment.
Sure.
I know that Mr. Mendiola supports the bill, so that's an easy one. I'm a correspondent to the bill. I'm only concerned that for the listening audience and for anybody here testifying, if you're going to give me or you're going to provide this committee or anybody in the legislature stats of what goes on in the States, United States, give us some of the numbers on Guam. Don't keep telling me or keep giving me something, 11,000, 10,000. Tanzan Bi Ni, 500 on Guam got injured, so cut it out. Don't drown me with what goes on in California or Nevada, because why? There are millions of people there. Tanza, we're not even at 200,000, so if you want to give me stats, compare the stats. Compare Guam with Saipan, Hawaii, Alaska, anywhere, but make sure they're not in the millions, because if their population is in the million, no brain, no brainer, huh? I already know, we'll never be able to catch up to them. I look at everybody's testimony, and they come up with numbers, and I'm, oh, only on Guam. Okay, let's keep in mind, we're talking about Guam, we're talking about the fire department having the ability to put in the safety measures. Sure, there's going to be naughty people out there, is going to do some, going to grab some and do some, nothing new, nothing new. As a former police officer, we protect our weapon, and we've had our guns. Police officers lost their pistol, stolen, nothing new. So when we talk about fireworks, stick to Guam or someplace that's, you can compare it with Guam. You want to talk about population, match it. Talk about injuries, match it, because there are some issues and some bills that are passed in the mainland that we will never support coming on Guam. Quite obvious, but that's just my comment in general, because I know Mark is in support of this bill, so that's an easy one. He's from Saipan, so he's good, ready.
I'm from Guam, sir, but I live in Saipan.
I'll be working together.
I'm Benai. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Senator Taitzegui, do you have any questions for this? Senator Fisher, you have any questions for this gentleman?
Hi, Mr. Mendiola.
Yeah.
Is your son Benjamin with us?
Yeah, he's from school, I just asked him to come and participate in X.
Can I ask, do you want to speak on the bill? Come on.
I think he's all right.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right, then, no questions.
So, can I just, a brief comment, and I appreciate, this, you know, public hearing is supposed to be a dialogue where we engage our community to have, you know, to flush these things out, and I get it, I know that there's a lot of ifs, ands, and all these other things. I mean, if you remember in Mingila, no matter what, I think Guam has the highest building code on, actually, it's pretty strict, but yet, we had a large explosion at one of the restaurants, do you remember that? You know, all the regulations in place, all that other stuff, we cannot predict the future when it comes to these types of things, but in the bill, it specifically says that no fireworks would be sold to minors. You know, in my previous role, I mean, we have vape shops, and they're super regulated, but we find it every day in the hands of, it's got to be responsible people, responsible adults, and you cannot legislate that. You can educate. And so, just to some of the comments, and I appreciate the dialogue, Senator Telo, but in the south, I was just down there the other day camping out, and there's wildfires all over the place. The propensity and possibly happening more might be possible. I don't know, I can't predict the future, but I do know this, that whenever an agency comes before the legislature to, when they say defend the budget or to ask for money and all these other stuff, there's hardly any revenue-generating bills. We base ourselves on three legs of our economy, the military, tourism, and then, of course, our government, and it always seems that externally, we get their support, but locally, what kind of support are we trying to generate for ourselves? I lived in Saipan for five years, ladies and gentlemen, and I don't see, you know, deaths or any of that other stuff that is mentioned here, and if you want to talk about an aspirant community, that's the closest one to us, and they're regulated. And so I'm just saying for the record that I support this bill, and obviously, there may be some questions that is rightfully so, it's got to be vetted, but you know, we have a University of Guam, we have a public center for public policy, work with the fire department, flush out the rules and regulations, but I support the chief. Our fees are super low. We need to start doing things that's going to help us meet the needs of a modern fire department, and if we're just going to sit back and wait for it, and then we're going to fight at the legislature about who gets what of the pie, we're too late. This is the time where we can talk about it, and we can flush these ideas out, and if it's a great idea, then the august body of the legislature, the 15 people will support it, the governor will support it, and if not, then state your piece. But as a citizen of this community, I wanted to come here and render testimony, because I see that although it's going to be a great benefit for the island, we have to cautiously walk through it, and I don't think this is a bill that was put haphazardly together. I read through it, I read the fiscal note, I read all these things, I did the research, I made sure that I was prepared to answer questions. I learned about 1.4G, it's not DOCOMO 5G, but 1.4G, and that's consumer-grade, you know? And so let's get real about it. I mean, we have houses burning down with unattended candles, we have all these things going on on our island, and our fire department needs the support, and if we can lend support to them through revenue-generating bills such as this, and I'm not looking at, God forbid, I have five kids, I don't want any of my kids to die, no one wants their kids to die, but I guarantee you this, that I'm a responsible parent, I'm a responsible adult, and when my kids are going to be involved in any of these things, we're going to be responsible, and that's the key. And I think that's part of the fire prevention's motto, is to prevent these things from happening at the front end, and they need the support, and that's what I'm here for. And that's what I'm here for. Unless at the budget here, I'll come testify again and say, hey, give them everything that they want, you know? But this is an opportunity for us, this August body, to look at a revenue generating bill that's gonna support the Fire Department. And I still believe that we need to flush this out. And the fire chief behind me, he's a smart guy. This is a guy that I guarantee has, will have his ducks in a row. Give him the opportunity to present that to you folks and you will see that we really have to weigh it out. And I hope that the authors and the folks that co-sponsored the bill will really consider some of the testimony here today. Because we're here for one thing, and that's to make Guam great. God bless.
Thank you, sir. Senator Canatza, do you have a question for the gentleman? Senator Sniklas, go ahead.
Hey, sir. Thank you again for coming. I gotta applaud you for bringing your son. You know, it's a wonderful thing to see. Thank you for having him take part in this.
Yeah, for me, I think it's important that our kids at this age should start learning about civics and learning about standing up for something that you think is appropriate and also speaking up against things that you don't think is appropriate. And so I'm just glad that he's here to witness it today. I have other kids, but this one in particular says I'm interested in something. So I decided to take him here today. So thank you for the opportunity. Don't go into Zeus Massey.
Thank you for coming up.
Yes, sir, thank you. And in a couple of years, you'll be up here too.
All right, and I'd like to call up now Franco Hui and former Chief Fred Bernalio, if you'd like to join us. I know you have written testimony, but if you'd like to give oral testimony, you're more than welcome, sir. All right, so please come up, both of you. All right, I had Mr. Franco Hui here first on the list. So as you were, sir, please go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, my name is Franco Hui. I'm doing fireworks business in Saipan more than 20 years. My Saipan, yeah, the fireworks name, I think Senator already know that, Dragon Fireworks. So far, we don't have any death or serious injury related to the fireworks. Comparatively, fireworks are safer than the other silly pilling goods like firearms. Now I moved to Guam and doing business locally. I'm here to try to tell the Guam people some basic knowledge about fireworks based on my knowledge. Fireworks actually is classified in different classes. There are 1.2 consumer fireworks, just like the Senator already know that. And there's also 1.3G display fireworks. This one, 1.3G, this fireworks need the ATF license. Now, today we talk about 1.4G, no need ATF. So the 1.4G, basically, the fireworks is a safe product. How do you know the fireworks, also, they have the EX number on each boxes? This one is from the, you can check online to see this is being inspected. Those fireworks products are decided for consumer usage. These fireworks has limited powder and all the fireworks are checked by the related US agency called the AFSL, American Fireworks Standard Laboratories. They will check all the fireworks safe and meet the US standard requirement before they ship out to US territory. Also, all the fireworks have very clear safety label on each borders. As long as the consumer following the instruction of each fireworks, it should be safe. Also, when the kids playing the fireworks need their adult and parents supervision. In fact, most of fireworks injuries are caused by misuses or they don't follow safety labeling instruction. Of course, even though 1.4G consumer fireworks are safe, we still need the local government agency to help us to regulate the people to safely use the fireworks. For example, that's what the Saipan doing. The Fire Department can restrict retailer to sell all the fireworks to the kids. Only adult can buy the fireworks or they get big penalty. Then the adult and the parents will have a control or supervision for the kids. At the same time, government can educate the public throughout their media about the safety of the fireworks. Lastly, if that fireworks are the most fun and enjoyable product when the celebrating New Year or Christmas time comes, when closing the season of the Christmas or New Year, fireworks look like a magnet to drive the people to celebrate New Year. Otherwise, people will choose other alternative like the firearms to making song to celebrate their feeling or happiness of the New Year. Therefore, I'm totally support the government of Guam to make the law 1.4G consumer fireworks legalized in Guam. So people have their fireworks to expect their happiness to celebrate their New Year. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you for your testimony. Former Chief Bernalio, if you'd like to go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, honorable senators from the 37 Guam Legislature. My name is Fred Bernalio, Jr. I'm retired chief of police for the Guam Police Department, former director of Veterans Affairs. I have over 40 years of law enforcement, security experience, homeland security education. And I submitted some written testimony in opposing this legislation as it's written now. And one of the things when I come before the legislature and oppose legislation, I always look at, the first area I look at is the findings of the proposed legislation that's being proffered. One of the interesting things that I looked at is the finding that said that should this legislation, should it be passed into law, it would reduce the number of celebratory gunfire that we hear during New Year's Day or sometimes for July. And it was interesting because there was no peer-reviewed cited research to authenticate that, to substantiate that just because we pass a law like this, it would reduce gunfire? You know, I really respect Joyce Sniklas because, you know, I worked with him when I was chief of police in the past, when he was chief of police. They've actually intercepted in one operation some fireworks and confiscated being brought into our island. We talk about economics and money. Where does this money come from to finance this? Well, he was right. The biggest consumer of fireworks is our own country, the United States of America. And guess where we're purchasing that from? Where most of that commercial or consumer-grade fireworks have been purchased? From China. PRC China are an adversary. The current rise of China right now that's going on in the Asia-Pacific region. I'm an alumni of the Asia-Pacific Center for Security Studies and the conversations that take place at that area in Hawaii talks about the security concerns of China and what's happening here on our island. I mean, what's happening here in our region. And we have nefarious actors here, you know? And what I'm surprised at here in this testimony, and I'd like to thank Senator Telo Taitsegui for bringing some of this stuff up about the importance of bringing testimony over because I actually sent the message to the current Guam Attorney General's office. He has the Consumer Protection Office there, the Office Attorney General. They should have representatives here to give their side of what the impact of this legislation would amount to. We also have, we should also have the Guam Police Department here. I don't know why former Chief of Police, I mean, why Chief of Police, Steve Ignacio is in here a representative. But there is gonna be a law enforcement nexus on this that the Fire Department will need, especially when you have stuff like a potential IED and that stands for improvised explosive device. Military people have understood that, how you can weaponize even consumer-grade fireworks. And we have a meth problem here on Guam. And it doesn't take that much of rocket science for our crystal meth dealers out there to put an improvised explosive device using consumer-grade fireworks. But then I hear, of course, the rationale, well, you know, you can weaponize anything, right? But I'm just saying, I'm sounding the signals now as a citizen right here about the ramifications of that impact, that this could be weaponized. Consumer-grade fireworks are something that could be exploited too. The FBI put a bulletin out 2013. I provided a copy of that and sharing that with the media too. Sharing that with even Office of Homeland Security that I don't see any representative down here. I would be wondering why Civil Defense Office of Homeland Security wouldn't be here. There are a lot of things that could go wrong with this if it's rushed into it without proper vetting from the Guam Legislature in terms of input from individuals. Public health, Guam Environment to Protection Agency is another thing. Why? Because after these consumer-grade fireworks are used, where are they disposed at? Where are they put at? Is it on our ground? Is it on our lens? Does it get into the water lens or anything? And there have been some very creative ways, sometimes, when we do talk about celebrations of New Year's or 4th of July, sometimes they're using laser light shells. So they don't have to use explosive devices, you know, to try and minimize or mitigate the potential threat to our environment. There, I could go all over the place with my testimony here and talk about the environmental concerns, the public health concerns, there are individuals with respiratory problems. I can even share an experience I had as a Guam police officer going to GW High School in a football game because a lady said she wanted them to turn down the volume of a PA system of a football game going on. She just wants to get to sleep. But there is actual, a former candidate, Harvey Igna, who submitted some testimony saying legalizing firearms, I mean fireworks right now, you know, that Senator Joyce Sniklas as the primary sponsor is a bad idea. I mean, look at what Guam is right now encountering now. We don't encounter too many calls to, are they celebrating someone's birthday party? Christening? I mean, what other kind of celebrations could be used? That's why I did appreciate Senator Sniklas when he was on a program, a public program where he responded that he'll listen to maybe limit the times that you can use it, which some states do do. And I know Senator Joe Sniklas mentioned about comparing or looking at states. But it's that area of the nation and what's happening in the mainland that sometimes gives us some information, good information, about what Guam can do, especially when it involves, especially when it involves the challenges that are happening with consumer-grade fireworks happening at old times in the mornings. You know, CNMI, we have individuals from CNMI or do business in CNMI. They've actually had to amend their laws because they had some injuries. They had some tourists who were frightened, right? You talk about economics. People, I think, love to celebrate a New Year's Eve, love to celebrate 4th of July, but would they want to celebrate every single time in their neighborhood? Would this change our neighborhood? Or are we gonna be a little bit, even from the office of the governor who's listening right now, would they just want to say, we don't want to rock the boat right now. We just got out of a pandemic and there are a lot of times we just don't want it every single day. So that's a little bit of a brief of what I want to say in my synopsis so I can give a chance for any of you senators. Ask me questions about my views on this and why I'm so adamant about not rushing to this, opposing it as it's written right now, unless different legislation is given, which has the teeth in it to ensure that our community is safe. We, I did expect a real extensive report from the Fire Department, but I know they just recently lost their fire chief who resigned. But believe me, what really stood out from Acting Chief Joyce Sniklas is that the association, I believe, of fire chiefs have opposed these type of legislation. He said it, they opposed it. Because the fire, just like police, are risk adverse. They always look at the potential threats that can go down in the horizon. Thank you.
All right, now thank you for your testimony. I'd like to recognize Orion Mendiola. Please begin anytime you'd like, sir.
Good afternoon. When I start this, I'm just, well, I see Orion Mendiola. I'm, I guess now as of today I'm known. I have 13,000 followers on Facebook and Instagram. I teach tomorrow history, customs and courtesy. I'm a retired police officer. I'm a former Marine combat retired Army. I just want to voice my support for this. There's one thing I saw at Fort Lewis, Washington, some of the houses. 4th of July, it's lit up. Guam, 4th of July is the quietest place on American soil. Period. 4th of July, there is nothing going on here. In America, everybody's celebrating their freedom. As a vet, I kind of hate the noise, but you know what? To me, that sounds like freedom. And I fought for that, literally. And I think these people should have it. If we had so many problems, we can't foresee the future, man. But you know what? This is America. And there's one thing that we need right now, like a China was mentioned, is a sense of patriotism. We gotta remember, we forgot, it's quiet here on 4th of July. Come on now, think about it. Do you really hear anything on 4th of July? In Washington State, it's lit up. They got blocks, families compete. Over the years, over a year, they build up. And they're showing me their things, some family go, oh, that's nasty dude. And then the next block over, oh, we're gonna come out with this. All I saw was camaraderie, patriotism. They just loved outdoing each other. That was it. I didn't see the IEDs and stuff like that. I experienced that three times. But I don't see it. Those are, sometimes those things, yeah, maybe it can happen. It's a possibility for a lot of things. But you know what? Remember this, we're the quietest American soil on the 4th of July, man. That's pretty shameful. And I love my country. And I think we should celebrate it, let everybody celebrate it. Even July 21st. It's freedom, man. You gotta put rules on freedom? No. It's shameful. I mean, somebody comes from America, they're like, hey, where's 4th of July? No, no, back there, I think some of you are back there during the 4th of July. It's just crazy and everybody loves it. Everybody loves it. The patriotism. They remember, this is America. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Now I'd like to open up questions by my colleagues, starting with Senator Joe Sinagastin. If you have any questions for this panel, please feel free, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I go back, the main concern is the Fire Department. Provide us the information, provide us the recommendation so we can put the proper regulation and controls, not necessarily GAR. Because I've learned a very good lesson on my first term. GAR is an interpretation of what the law states. Tell us what we need to change to make this a reality. Because exactly as the last testimony given, where America's day begin is boring on the 4th of July. You're right. Thank you for your service, sir. And we shouldn't be boring. Not when your America's day begin is Guam. Sad, but you know, it's true. But as soon as the Fire Department provides the information, then we put the regulation, we start doing the protection. Manage it from there. I don't expect the Fire Department to be the only one inspecting. I expect revenue and tax, I expect the Police Department. Why? Because before they can get a business license, that's revenue and tax. That's the compliance branch would handle that. To make sure that, you know, they're doing what they're supposed to do. They got a green light. And then we take example, what's going on in Saipan and take a look at elsewhere and we start modifying it to make sure. We put all the precautionary steps. Because exactly what was said earlier, we gotta preach responsible handling of fireworks. Whatever the grade is, we need to preach responsible handling. And until that comes out and put in paper and written as law, we're not gonna be able to move forward because why? We're coming up every reason to not or to slow it down or deny it. I'm here to support the bill. We're gonna get this through. And for the Fire Department, Chief Joey, unfortunately, a set of your men met with us and the author of the bill and they said they'll have testimony and ready to present to us. I guess they didn't pass it on to you, so get with them. I'm not gonna tell you who they are. They're probably watching saying, I hope they don't identify us. Just get with them and get the information out. Because I'll tell you what, once everybody's aware of what's going on and we put it out in the news, then people know that we're serious. Because as you mentioned, hey, Aga, now he's doing it. So be it, Aga's doing it. Pretty soon, Zigo's gonna do it. It doesn't matter, it's gonna happen all over this island pretty soon. Why? Because in order for those fireworks to come out... Because in order for those fireworks to come out, it has to be somebody licensed. Am I correct, Chief? There has to be somebody licensed. Those fireworks don't just show up at the store. There's somebody licensed that grabs that fireworks and sets it up because for folks that haven't been down south to see the fireworks going off, they're professionally handled. There's not, there's not just a fisherman or a farmer that's shooting it off. No, there is somebody that knows what he's doing. I've seen it and I enjoyed it and they're almost identical to what you see in Tumon. So nothing new, but we can allow it and make it legalized. Let's get it right. And then we move forward from there because that's the only way we're going to, we're going to take care of whatever we need to take care of. And if there's steps we need to take, put it in law that if somebody's caught, if a miner's caught with a fireworks and there's not a responsible adult next to them, grab the item away, find the adult. It's the only way. It's no different what we do when the Police Department catches miners with alcohol. They look for where it came from, then they tag the adult. Do the same thing for fireworks. We do that for tobacco. So there's nothing different. It's just another item that I know Joey's going to say, ATF, come here and you're going to help us, we're going to write this right. So we get it right so that ATF folks don't have to worry about it too much. They'll probably be one of the people that are going to show up and enjoy the fireworks themselves because then they know it's done right. And that's our goal. We've got to do this right. Do it right the first time and let's just move on. Because I know we can get this done. I don't know if it'll reach July 21st. We'll probably be having people shoot off their guns anyway on July 4th and July 21st, but that we need to stop. That's what we need to promote. Fire, your fireworks, not your weapon. Because I know that, like I said, when the chief was in the Police Department, I was in the Police Department before him. I used to go chasing after woo shooting. And I wish it was fireworks because it's easier to track. You don't see the flare going up. There's no, there's no tracer on a pistol. Fireworks, there is. You can trace where the fireworks were shot at. Pistols, you can. Rifles, you can. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm, you know, we can move along. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Senator Titegui. Please ask the questions of your panel.
Si, doos maasi, Mr. Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here to testify. The more that's here, the more well-educated we are on the situation, or at least the experiences, especially for you, former Chief of Police. You mentioned in your testimony earlier that there has been some injuries in Saipan from fireworks. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Franco, you said there wasn't and you've been there for 20 years. So, you know, I don't know who to believe at this point, but I'm more inclined to believe the chief since he's been working quite closely with C N M I.
Senator, this is the findings that was written down on 15, number H B two, 150, I mean, 15127 Public Law, House of Representatives of the C M I Commonwealth Northern Marianas Legislature. The Commonwealth Legislature finds that this past holiday season, emergency room treated two young boys ages six and eight for firecracker-related injuries. The six-year-old boy sustained second-degree burns to 50% of his face while the eight-year-old boy sustained first and second-degree burns to his hand, also slight burns to his hair, eyelashes, eyebrows and nose. Few days later, C H C treated four other individuals for firecracker-related injuries. Two individuals suffered burns to their hands while other two sustained severe eye injuries, leaving one individual legally blind to the right eye. And you know, Senator, besides these injuries that was indicated in their findings and when they had to amend their law and upgrade their law in C N M I, there have been talk also about insurance costs. What is the impact when it comes down to you know now that individuals are going to get permits for the use of consumer fireworks? And retail establishments are going to store them, you know, in their stores, you know? Or will it be?
Excuse me, Chief Joey, are you leaving? Okay, in case we have more questions.
You know, because it's been in my experience, when there's burglaries, they'll go for the cigarettes and the alcohol, right? Well, now you may also see that when burglars go into the mom and pop stores, if it gets accessible for that, they're going to start taking the, they're going to zero in in the where they store these consumer fire-grade fireworks. And when it gets into the hands of those criminals burglarizing there, I'm going to just say it for this record, don't say that, I mean, I want to say it for the record so everyone's well informed, it can happen. How prevalent it would be among our business community? I mean, another area too, I mean, it's surprising too because I would think even the Guam chambers could be here, representatives from insurance, especially when it talks about, you know, where these regulations, how the impact of the Fire Department's regulations and where they'll store these things and where it's going to be sold from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernalio. And I appreciate that and I'm sure the author of the legislation appreciates that too, that Mr. Chair, if we can see their, you know, their comments from Chief Ignacio, Homeland Security, as well as Public Health and the Attorney General's Office to provide testimony, at least send out, you know, an invitation for them to chime in on this legislation as we move forward. But Mr. Franco, I think you need to change your testimony because it's obvious it's in writing that there has been some incidences in Saipan. Do you order your fireworks directly from China that comes into Saipan? Directly from China?
Yes.
And what is the guidelines and safety mechanism? Or, you know, we have USDA or, you know, the F D A, all those safety mechanisms on consumer products. What is the safety mechanism that you, and do you plan on if this bill should pass, bring fireworks into Guam through China?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, thank you for that. In the C N M I, Mr. Chair, it states here that prohibits fireworks with the exception of sparklers, caps, as used in toy pistols or other party favors, snakes or similar smoke-producing, containing not more than 100 grams of combustible substances where there is no visible flame discard during discharge, model rockets and model rocket motors designed for the purpose of propelling recoverable aerial models. So this is Saipan, you know, it was already brought up by one of the other senators that we do comparables. Well, Saipan is very comparable and it's even a smaller population and having already that many that the chief has brought up on those children who were injured, we can look at the Virgin Islands, American Samoa. American Samoa prohibits fireworks, which is defined under the terms arms and requires a license for the Public Safety Commission in order for fireworks to be brought into the territory. Additionally, the license must be received approved from the Attorney General. And that's why I'm asking, Mr. Chair, to include the Attorney General on this too as well. Because if we're going to do something that's going to completely, you know, change what we've had in law currently and could cause harm to our public, then I think we need to incorporate the Attorney General's Office as well. And there's probably a reason for that. So you bring in fireworks directly from China that does not have a U S code on it, but here you're talking about how you're bringing in fireworks. Oh, by the way, you're doing business on Guam, so your plan is to sell fireworks? Oh, can you turn on your microphone, sir? Thank you.
Yeah, if the law passed.
If at all possible, you're going to bring them in here and it's going to come directly? Oh, if the law passes, yes. That's what I said. If the law passes, you plan on bringing fireworks here?
Yes.
Okay. Do you plan on selling it to any of the other vendors here on Guam?
I will, this one will be work with the law enforcement. If the law tell me what to do, I just follow their direction. They tell me, for example, I can only sell a certain area or certain retailer, I just follow them. That's why we need to work with their local agency. I cannot just, you know, on my image, what to share, what to do. Because I don't know the law, how you regulation on this one. Because different area have different regulation.
Okay, let's say the law allows you to sell these fireworks. You know, you bring them in and you're allowed to sell it to other, you know, stores or people who have stores. Can you name some of the stores who are looking at selling these fireworks?
You mean locally?
Yeah, locally.
I think I can't mention their name right now. Just mean that if they're, just say if their law, depending on the law, how to make their guideline for the importer to.
So you're saying that, you're saying here and you're testifying in front of us that nobody has approached you saying that if you brought in fireworks, I'll buy it from you and sell it in my store?
Maybe I will open there, maybe just a fireworks store for the, not the supermarket, maybe the, what do you call that, the temporary store for the fireworks, specifically for the fireworks, but of course with the permit of the Fire Department.
Okay, you're not answering my question.
I'm sorry.
If I own a store.
Yes.
Right? And you're selling fireworks?
Yes.
And I want to come to you and buy fireworks?
Yes.
You would sell them to me so I can sell it in my store?
Yes.
Okay. Has anybody approached you to ask you?
No, up to now, no.
That if you bring it in, they'll buy it from you?
No.
No one? So what do you do, since you have this already in place in Saipan, what do you do with, how do you dispose of outdated fireworks that obviously has an expiration or fireworks that you can see is damaged or is even leaking? How do you dispose of those?
On Saipan, there's no specific law. How do you dispose of the fireworks? What we do just separate, this is not the kitchenware, I mean, the regular trash and then put it just regular dummy. We don't have specify environmental side like the disposal, no.
So what do you do with them? What do you do with them?
Actually, the firework, when it pop, it's already on the air, no more. Become the, no more powder.
But they have, you know, if it's damaged or leaking or expiration, I mean, you're saying that.
Fireworks never expiration.
No expiration, but what if they're leaking some liquid coming out on the side or damaged in any ways? How do you get rid of them?
We open the boxes and put the powder. Sometime we go to the drainage.
Drainage?
No, give it to the Fire Department or something like that. Sometime Fire Department will take it. If they want, for example, your way, when they check the fireworks, it's damage, like the crack fireworks, you have to wait to take it.
Okay, yeah. You know what, Mr. Chair, let's include E P A as well because we don't want to find these things like actually Chief brought up, you know, it could be an environmental issue too as well. I mean, to dispose of those that are not going to be able to be fired off, we got to know where they're going to go. You know, that's another place. So it's, so, Mr. Chair, you know, it's quite a bit of, and I appreciate, you know, my good friend from Hoggett, you know, and his bill, and I'm glad to hear that he's very open to making sure that when we do do this bill that it's done right and all the safety mechanisms and everybody can come in and chime in. But I, you know, recommend, Mr. Franco, that you do revise your testimony, you know, before you bring it in here because we're all going to read what you said and then finding out that some of the comments you made were not true. It's not going to help. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. Senator Fisher, you're recognized.
Yes, thank all of you gentlemen for offering your testimony, but I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator, oh, Senator Kanata has taken off. All right, let me speak briefly here to read in public testimony from somebody from Risa Siniklas, who could not be here today. Good afternoon, my name is Risa Siniklas. I'm a graduate student at the University of Hawaii at Manoa, pursuing my master's degree in social work. As part of my social work policy class, one assignment of the semester is to testify on a bill that I might find interesting. Today, I would like to testify in Bill 9-37 regarding the legalization and regulation of consumer-grade fireworks. As a child on New Year's Eve, I remember needing to be inside my family home or under the safety of a roof before midnight. Even as an adult, I scrambled to make it home and inside my apartment before the clock strikes 12. You may wonder why this story is important. The reason being is that we worried about the celebratory gunfire that takes place during New Year's Eve celebration. It is not uncommon to hear different types of firearm going off days, even weeks before the New Year or any big holiday. I would like to remind you all of the universal law of gravitation. In simpler terms, what goes up must come down. In 2009, this was the case for a child who was struck by a stray bullet during a New Year's celebration in Gigo. Someone had fired a weapon into the air, thinking that the direction in which the gun was being aimed would be safe. Unfortunately, this proved otherwise. Research has shown that bullets that are shot at angles less than vertical are more dangerous. Death and injuries are reported every year when people are struck by gunfire, falling back to the ground. More research has shown that 200 feet per second is enough to penetrate a skull. For those who were hit by falling bullets, the chance of it being fatal was greater than a typical shooting. The outcome of that event could have been so much worse. Since then, I prayed that no child would be hurt because of an illegal gunfire during holiday celebrations. Although it won't completely prevent the use of firearms and celebratory gunfire, I believe that the legalization of consumer-grade fireworks would be beneficial to our community by giving people the alternative of choosing fireworks over firearms. This can be a possible solution to dissuade others from the use of illegal gunfire during holiday celebration and a means to celebrate safely together with family members of all ages. Thank you for your time and consideration. Doos maasi, Risa Siniklas. I just have a few comments myself. One of the fundamental guiding principles of my own time here as a senator is freedom. And I try to prioritize freedom in any way that I can in all the legislation that I do. And, but one of the things I've come to recognize in advocating for the cause of freedom is that freedom isn't free. There is always a cost associated with it, whether it be financial or otherwise, there are always trade-offs and consequences. You know, you think about places like England, they would ban firearms, but they're just trading one problem for knife violence, you know? And so I agree with Mrs. Siniklas's testimony here that this could be a great alternative in terms of safety to getting people instead of firing firearms, to be using much more safer consumer-grade fireworks. But really, I support this bill because I support the principles of freedom. I believe that the state that governs least governs best and that as much as possible, the government should stay out of the affairs of private individuals. One of the fundamentals values that define American society is freedom and liberty. Citizens should be free to make their own choices and take risks without government intervention. Restrictions on the use and sale of fireworks infringe on this fundamental value. The government should not restrict an individual to enjoy their life, property or pursue happiness. Moreover, a ban or strict regulation on fireworks limits the ability of individuals and families to celebrate certain holidays and special occasions. Fireworks are an essential part of many cultural and religious celebrations that have been passed down for generations and the government should not take away the right of individuals and communities to express their cultural and religious heritage. I myself, not only do I love fireworks, fireworks is a core memory for me. I am a Filipino-American and not only in America do we celebrate greatly with fireworks, I celebrated there in the Philippines as well. One of my core memories is one of the first time I got to blow something up, that was just incredible. And, you know, I would love for our communities to experience that, you know, that kinship and that coming together and that expression of what it is to be American and what it is to really appreciate the rocket's red glare in the evening. And so in the cause of freedom, I will be supporting this bill and I will be now yielding my time to Senator Siniklas to close. Go ahead, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my colleagues. Thank you, Chief Bernalio and everybody, Mr. Franco and Ryan. I, this has literally become my life's work, literally my life's work. Ever since I was 12, I kept reiterating to everybody that I've always dreamed that one day, if I ever had a chance to make it legal again, I would do it. And just a couple of years ago, I finally had the chance. And I would like to thank the people of Guam for actually giving me that chance to make a childhood dream come true. And yes, I'm about freedom too. I served in the army and I, along with. I served in the Army and I, along with my colleague here, believe that, you know, you should be able to pursue your happiness. And government shouldn't impinge on your, impugn on your right to do so. And I, and I wish, I wish we can, we can all work together to ensure that the public is safe, that we will work together with the Fire Department and the Transportation and the procurement of fireworks so that every aspect of this law, this bill that we proffer today, will be safe for everybody as much as we can. And I just, I just again want to say thank you again to the people of Guam. This is literally my life's work. I want to gift this as a, you know, as a Santa Claus. I just want to wish everybody a happy, great time living on Guam. And, you know, this is just one of those things. And everything that I've done is built on trust. I told you why I was running. I told you why I was here. I fulfilled my commitment. I did introduce the bill, and I'm here. And I wish, I wish that it will pass and that everybody will enjoy their freedom and their Fourth of July and make memories for years to come. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I have one last comment for the Benjamin Menjolas of the world, that young man that came in here to be involved in the civic process. Just for anybody listening, for anybody who has a dream